How about you?
Here we go. We're going to call this commission meeting to order. Today's the ninth day of July 2019, and it's good to welcome you all to our commission meeting. I want to welcome, notice that on my right is Commissioner... Commissioner Fords over here. And Commissioner Harvey, good to have you, good seeing you today. The day will come.
Good one.
We'll have you too. Anyway, good to have you all here today. It looks like our invocation this morning is a moment of silence. I don't like that. I'll say our opening prayer, okay? Our holy fathers, as we come before this day, we give you thanks and gratitude for the opportunity we have of being in public service. It's grateful, I'm grateful this day for this commission, the good commissioners we have to work with, and our staff, and all those people who work so hard to keep this county going. We pray that you bless us and be with us this day. Bless us that thy spirit will be with us here. The decisions we make and the things we do will be in accordance with thy holy mind and will. We give you thanks for all that has been done for us and say it in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Very good. Shelley Howes, give us a pledge of allegiance.
Please rise and join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shelley. Commissioner Harvey, you have the thought today.
A privilege, thank you, Commissioner.
You bet.
Commissioner, this guy teased you. Yeah, I got that. Commissioners... Sometimes... I guess a lot more recently, I've been called a politician. And that's, you know, when you, somebody decides to run for a political office or enter the campaign field, they earn that, they earn that by doing that. But my heart has been filled with a lot of gratitude. It started, it's been happening for years, but especially in the last week. I was grateful to be able to get up and trim a few roses on the Fourth of July, really early in the morning, when it was really cool and nice. And I, I thought, what a wonderful time, wonderful place to be free and not have to worry about what, who, who's going to tell me what to do, or what's going to tell me what to do, or... We have good health, we have great air to breathe, we have a great place to live in, and I, and I became exceptionally grateful for so many who'd made that sacrifice, and some families that have made that ultimate sacrifice. As I started going on with the agenda, and so if being a politician means that, that qualifies one who has gratitude, just because your words may be a little flowery, so be it. Proud to wear that title, but I am grateful for those who've served. I learned recently that right out here on the, on 24th Street, just as you start to bend the corner and head to the freeway, there's a Merrill Baker American Legion post. It's on the south side of the street. And the American Legion was founded in 1919, March of 1919, 100 years ago in Paris, France. And in July of 1919, this little American Legion post right out here got its charter, its first charter. So they celebrated yesterday, their 100th year anniversary, one of the first ones in the country, which didn't surprise me because Ogden's been the first in a lot of things. If it wasn't for Ogden and the Browning's, the gun helped save things. If it wasn't for the Ogden and producing the Marriott's, we wouldn't have hotels. And if it wasn't for some of the other places, we wouldn't be able to ship things with trucks. We've started a lot of things that keep the fiber of this country going, right here in our little Weber County, Utah. But there have been many that have paid sacrifice, a lot of sacrifice for this, the ultimate sacrifice in families as well. Which took me to another quote that I was handed by a dear friend yesterday. This was a speech given in Paris at the Sorbonne. And it says, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives brilliantly, who errs and comes up short again and again because there's no effort without error of shortcoming, but who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself for a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly. So that is the, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never knew neither victory or defeat." I'm grateful for freedom. I'm grateful for those who had the courage to allow that freedoms to all of us. And I appreciate this opportunity to say that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, that's a good thought. So Brian, I was going to have you introduce your helper there, but he laughed. Was that your son?
That was, yeah. He had a doctor's appointment, and then his mom was a little late to pick him up, so I thought maybe I'll bring him in.
Sure. Man, that's pretty cool. I'm sorry I was a little slow to do that. I'd love to have him introduced.
You're fine, I'll have him come back sometime.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, under presentations today, oh, we've got public comment. Is there's those who've come to comment, or come, yes, please come forward and feel free to take some time and talk to us. Pull that mic down, please. Introduce yourself.
Is that okay?
Perfect.
My name is Jan Fulmer. I'm from Eden, 3741 Red Hawk Circle, but I'm sure you have my address. Commissioners, I'd like to make a request that you help influence the completion of a report. And if I could just give you quickly some background and why it's important that this report be completed. Approximately two and a half years ago, the Weber County Commissioners approved the Ogden Valley General Plan, which the county paid Logan Simpson Consultants to develop. It was a two-year process, there were a lot of public meetings, a lot of the public input was really put into that plan. But after that plan was accepted and approved, and in that plan were projections on how much development could occur in Ogden Valley based on the development rights that were there. And the question was raised, is there enough water to support that type of development? A study had not been done. So Weber County requested support from a Utah, a state organization to do a water study. And as a result of starting that water study, they also decided it was important to also put a septic system study in because they found phosphates from septic systems in the reservoir, which is not a good situation. In Ogden Valley right now, there's pretty progressive development. As a matter of fact, there was even a recent rezone request, which I know the Commissioners still have to think about and make a decision on, to rezon a parcel of land so it could be more like commercial industrial to support some of the construction development needs up in the valley. However, we do not know how much development that valley can support, not only in terms of water, but also in terms of, can that development continue with individual septic systems? Now, we got a partial report from the state organization last summer, but the water report wasn't complete, and they had not done any real work on the septic system study. The final report on both of those items was supposed to be delivered in November or December of last year, and we still do not have it. So if there is any way, Commissioners, you can influence this, maybe pull some strings to get this report done, because decisions are being made without knowing how much development can that valley support. And I think it's very important to have factual information before any decisions are made. And if you can get that report completed, it's usually delivered at one of your commission meetings. Could you please consider having that commission meeting up in the valley? Because many residents are very concerned and would like to know what is the truth here, and how much development can this valley support? Which, by the way, is the recreation gem of Weber County. And Commissioner Jenkins, I believe when you were in the state legislature, you very much heavily influenced some legislation to promote more tourism in the state of Utah. When you look at tourism at the county level, the majority of people that use our valley, whether it's for skiing, whether it's for the reservoir, don't come from Weber County. The other two top counties are Salt Lake County and Davis County. So I don't think we want to see poop in the reservoir. That would certainly discourage tourism in the summer. And I just would ask you to please consider doing whatever is possible to get that report finished.
Thank you, Jan, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's a great request. Yeah.
I'd like to...
Commissioner Fords?
Yeah, I'd like to hear Sean Wilkinson's perspective on this report. I wasn't aware that the report wasn't complete. So I'd like to get a report if we could on it before we make a decision.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I appreciate Mrs. Fulmer bringing that up. I had this conversation with Charlie Ewart in our planning division two weeks ago, and he is asking for help as well. My understanding is that the report is complete, but that the state agency that completed the report had to send it to another state agency who reviews the report, makes corrections, and they're having a difficult time getting it back from that agency. And I am not exactly sure which agency that is. So let me talk to Rick and Charlie one more time, get those details, we will pass them on to you. But I believe this has risen to your level, and your help would be appreciated, and probably will make the difference in getting that report quickly.
And I appreciate that. Mrs. Fulmer, I appreciate you bringing that forward to us. I don't think there's any question that septic tank systems in the valley are on our radar. It's something that the growth in the valley is basically mandating, we look at this. I'm not a personal believer in individual septic tanks. We need to look at some type of systems up there, whatever that may be, village or otherwise based. But I think we want to be clear that the water issues, the water rights that are owned by the state of Utah, is a separate issue, although independent from our septic tank systems. They both have to be analyzed together, but we can't obviously take control of the water. That's a state of Utah issue. But we can take control and look very aggressively at some type of septic tank sewage disposal system in the valley that makes sense for the future. Because I agree with you, we can't continue to put phosphates into the reservoir.
Thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate anything you can do there.
Okay.
I appreciate you, Mrs. Fulmer. I was not aware that there was a water study being done up there. This is the first I'd heard of that, so...
It's been going on for a couple of years.
Actually, I think there was one presentation made...
That's right.
Before the commission, was it last year, the year, I was at that meeting, but...
Yes.
I thought it was complete, so I appreciate you bringing that up. That's a good point. You did good today.
And... More information will be forthcoming very soon.
Thank you. And I would hope that we can, if we can't have a full commission meeting at that point in time, at least have a public hearing addressing this issue. We have had one, as you probably are aware, we had one commission meeting up there a couple of months ago, whether that allows us to have another one, but I think we can at least have a public hearing, Jan.
You know, it's interesting, I actually went and met last week with Lance Wood in the Central Weber Sewer District, specifically on sewage in the Upper Valley, to see if they would be interested. And I was met with lukewarm reception. He says that this question has been actually bantered around before. He says this was not the first time, and anyway, he didn't have anything really negative to say about it, but he didn't have anything really positive to say about it either. He says that's something that they didn't want necessarily to be involved with before there was a decision made whether there was something that wanted to be done. So that's right.
It's an expensive issue.
Yes. Mrs. Fulmer, do you want to say something else?
If I still have three minutes, part of my three minutes left...
Go ahead, don't worry about it, we're not talking yet.
We, I and my husband, we are transplants from the east coast. We've been here now for 12 years, and we love where we lived. We've never looked back on our move. We were very fortunate to build in the Wolf Creek Development, which has the Wolf Creek Water and Sewer. I have to tell you, when we found out that the lot we purchased was under the jurisdiction of that Wolf Creek Water and Sewer facility, it was a no-brainer. Because the water that comes out of that sewer treatment plant is clean enough to be recycled back into irrigation. Now, if we see there are septic system issues, based on how many homes can be built, based on development rights, that's going to make a big difference to developers if all of a sudden they may have to put in a more sophisticated type of system like that. But look at how it saves the water. And we are able to recycle a very, very valuable resource, and you know, from year to year, we never know what we're going to have up there, especially for irrigation. So please, let's get some data. I always knew throughout my career, you never make a decision unless you have factual information, and we need that data.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments today. All right, we're going to move the agenda, go to the next item on the agenda. And that is...
You've got another public comment.
Oh, come on. Evan, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were coming forward.
Kevin Burns from North Ogden. I wasn't, I wasn't going to come up, but I listened to the water discussion, and I could feel my blood pressure going up a little bit. I don't live in the Ogden Valley, I live in North Ogden. But I was here last year when the lady from the state came and gave a very comprehensive report about the study they had been conducting, about, in reference to Ogden Valley water for a number of years. And Commissioner Jenkins, I would encourage you to go back and watch the video of the presentation that she gave. She was one of the smartest women I've ever, smartest people, forget that she was a woman. She was incredibly intelligent, gave a very comprehensive report about the problems with water in the Ogden Valley. And Commissioner Jenkins, you were fairly new to the, to the commission at the time, you had just taken a seat. And I would just encourage you to go back and watch the video as to how poorly that woman was treated by the commission, how rude and condescending the response was to that woman at that time. And so to say that you're unaware of any study that has ever taken place is just absolutely not true. So please, go back and watch your own video. Thank you.
Kevin, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, Kevin, come back here a second.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Fords?
I just wanted to make everybody aware that Kevin is the newest member of the Weber County Housing Authority Board as of yesterday, and we welcome on the board. He has some great insight in what this community needs in a lot of areas, and one of those being housing. So I'd like to personally give him our thanks for, for taking time out to be part of that board.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Kevin. Man, I, we're going to have to go back and watch that. You know, if that was when I first got on, I don't have a recollection of that.
I don't remember. A point of correction, I don't think you were here. I think Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Ebert, not right.
Well, either way, I do want to watch that. So thanks, Kevin, I appreciate that. And Shelley, maybe we can, yeah, if you can find that for us and give us a chance to do that. All right. Next item up on our presentation. Yes?
We have a little bit of technical difficulty, maybe we can come back to this after consent?
Okay, we'll do that. We'll skip F for just a second and go to G. Those are consent items. Request for approval of warrants 1858 through 1869, and 440, 796 through 44972, in the million, in the amount of $2,164,288. Request for the purchase orders in the amount of $72,057. Request for the minutes, approval of the minutes of July 2nd, and a request for approval of ACH payments to the US Bank in the amount of $144,000. So I had a chance to sit down and review those warrants with Ricky this morning, and would you like to go through those, Rick?
You bet. As far as purchase orders, we issued nine purchase orders this week for $72,000. Twenty-eight percent of that amount are $20,000 is for the Golden Spike Event Center, and that's to purchase concessions. Twenty-two percent, or $16,000, is for our IT department, and that will go towards purchasing network switches. Another 22% or $16,000 is for the library to purchase e-media, and 20% or $15,000 is for the transfer station, and that will buy compost colorant and diesel fuel. As far as checks, we issued 187 checks this week for $2.2 million. Thirty-seven percent of that amount are almost $800,000 is for employee insurance. Eighteen percent, or $397,000, is the 1% transportation tax, mostly 12th Street, but there was $52,000 that went to West Haven for 3,300 South work. Fourteen percent, or $295,000, was to purchase a grader for the roads department. Twelve percent, or $250,000, was the first payment on the archery range construction building.
So it was interesting sitting and go through these bills this morning. You know, the list of bills wasn't that long, and we go through a ton of money here, two, over $2 million that we, you know, and that's in a week. Anyway, I said to him, I said, "So how many times are we going to see this grader?" I thought we've approved that several times, but he said this is the final payment. Anyway, we appreciate that, Ricky. Thanks. So I have no question that these bills are right today. Do either of you have anything you'd like to bring up? Commissioner Fords?
Well, the only one I looked at, which I met with Ricky outside your office prior, was the $100,000 for the sheriffs, and that, he clarified that was actually an annual payment that we pay on the reverse 911.
That is. You know that reverse 911, over the years, we've had some conversations about that. It's about $104,000 bucks.
Right.
And I'm not sure we've ever used it in the county. So that's a, that's a heavy payment we make. And of course, like you said, reverse 911, so that's for us to be able to reverse send that out and warn people of things that are happening.
You opt in. You opt, you have to, with your device, you opt in, and then it is able to track where you are, and then if there's an emergency that's happening in your area, then it sends you an alert.
True.
And you know, and I would say that is, it's a heavy payment, and I hope, but I hope we never have to use it. I don't mind it being tested, but...
Yeah, yeah. Almost $105,000.
Yeah, I probably agree with Commissioner Harvey, that's something that maybe we, hopefully don't use, but if we ever have to, it's nice to have in the tool box.
I don't, I don't know how we, the thing is, is while I appreciate the security of the service, you know, it can be really valuable, $105,000 or $104,000 and some change isn't a lot of money to spend for even one family or one life, when it gets right down to it. But they, but the responsibility though is us to opt in, and we could do a better job in announcing that or having more people participate. I don't know what the participatory rate is. I feel a little chagrin that I don't know that.
Well, maybe we ought to have a little report done back to us on that. Let's see, I'm trying to think who would be the proper person. You know, Tina at 911 could give us a report on it. In fact, I've got her coming to our next work meeting. Shelley, maybe we can contact her and ask her to give us a report on that, reverse 911. That's good. Then we'll have, we'll be able to see if there's anything we want to do about that.
Be helpful.
All right, I'm ready for a motion on G.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the consent items, G on our agenda.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, we'll go to item H until they're done, they're not quite there. First item is request for approval of contract by and through Weber County and Cassie Sutherland for Secretary of the Draft, intermediate draft and pony show at the Weber County Fair. Duncan Olson, how are you?
Good, good morning, Commissioners.
You don't look like Ashton.
No, I'm not near as good-looking, I apologize about that, but...
Don't worry about it.
She got tied up with some fair stuff, so I'm going to present these. Action items one and two are actually the same thing, just two different secretaries. We have one of the best draft shows around, and it takes a lot of hands to lift this, this awesome show off the ground. I think you've, you've all seen it. And so this is just a contract for them to come and be the secretaries. They each get $200. It's not much, but they, they do a lot for us.
Questions?
This is, and you're right, Duncan, sorry. This is, our draft shows and what we do with draft horses is the finest in the land.
That's true.
They really do a wonderful job, and for people, if they enjoy draft horses or watching them work and how they are moved, and boy, it's, it's very, very fine. In fact, one of the prize teams in the, on the globe, the Budweiser Clydesdales often comment when they come and, and stay over here how great our area is, or how draft horse-minded we are. They don't find that in every area they go to, just a few pockets in Ohio and places like that.
Yeah.
But right here in Weber County is one of those places. So it's a great place. This is a good, good show. I'd encourage a lot of people to, this is a really neat...
Yeah, and we get teams, we get teams from all over that, that come and compete at our fair, which is awesome.
So last year, I spent a little time in there and run into some people I know, and I asked them, I says, "Man, you moved Idaho." He says, "Yeah, I did," but he says, "Weber County's got one of the finest draft organizations you could have." So he says, "I'm back to participate in that." So they came all the way from Idaho to participate in, and he says there were several others that did as well.
Great.
And it is, it is great. You want to watch how those, those guys operate those, and you say to yourself, "Well, is it that big a deal?" You know, there was a guy named Skeen, I'm trying to think his first name.
Archie?
Not Archie, it was Archie's grandfather, who had a construction company in Plain City. And he was the president of the International Lions. I can't think of his first name. Anyway, he had, he had one of the largest construction companies in the, at the turn of the century, early 1900s in the state of Utah, and he had 1,300 teams of draft horses. And you say, "Are you kidding me, 1,300 teams?" Well, when you get working roads and land projects, they worked them all with skid loaders and skid-type devices. Well, those were all pulled by draft horses. Well, those were all pulled by draft horses. And so, that's how they did it back then. And it's like, wow, that is amazing to do that.
It is.
Anyway, yeah. So, any more questions on this then, Commissioners? I entertain a motion to pass it. We might as well do one and two at the same time, because they're the same thing. It's just the second one is for Caitlin Wilkinson.
Do you want to make that presentation then, and then we'll make the motion?
Well, it's the same, he said. Right?
Yeah. It's, it's the same, just two secretaries.
Then what I'll do, with your permission, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Is make the motion that we approve the contract between Weber County and Cassie-Sutherland for the Secretary of the Drafts, and then also between Weber County and Caitlin Wilkinson for Secretary of the Draft, the intermediate draft and pony shows for the fair.
Very good. A motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. You ready? Okay. So, you're done?
Do you want to hammer this last one out?
Oh, hold on. Last one, hold on. Let's finish, Duncan. I didn't realize that you're on the next one, too.
Oh, you're good.
Number three, quest for approval of contract between Weber County and the Turn Pro Jackpots to be held on July 16th through 18th and July 25th to 27th. Duncan, go ahead.
So, we, we got the opportunity to host the State 4H Show, and the only way we were able to do that was to kind of make a deal with the Turn Pro Jackpots to switch some dates, and so, we gave some discounted rates to be able to switch and be able to host the State 4H competition. So, that's what this contract is, is it's, it's a discount in our billing rates for those two shows in trade for the contracted dates that we already had with them.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners? We do this occasionally.
Yeah, so...
Commissioner Harvey?
I'll make the request that we approve the contracts for those two jackpots for July's dates.
Very good. Motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Very good. It's approved. Unanimous. Thank you, Duncan. All right. Ernest, we ready?
Yes.
Very good. So, Marlon, you have a report to us that you're going to give?
Yes, sir.
Well, go right ahead, sir. The mic's on and the time cures.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be here. As you know, my father was a commissioner once and sat in those seats, so it's, it's very enjoyable to come and watch you operate. If I might, just as a matter of personal privilege, say something about your service. Charles Krauthammer died this last year. He was for over 30 years probably the most articulate conservative commentator, political commentator in our country, and he wrote a book that's called Things That Matter. And for him, the thing that mattered most was politics. And I just wanted to thank the three of you for devoting some portion of your life to politics. It is a word that has ambiguous connotations these days, but it shouldn't, because it's what makes the world go around. It's what creates the policies, the laws, the culture in the end that we live in. And so, I feel grateful to the three of you, and I'm glad to know you on a personal level, and just as one citizen in Weber County want to say how secure I feel with your knowledge of things and the judgments that you're making. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And then a little report on a stewardship that I acquired about three years ago from your predecessors, and principally from Commissioner Ebert, who at the time had taken a very deep interest in matters concerning poverty. So, in 2012, our own Stuart Reed, then a state senator, helped pass, and you may have been there when this happened, Chair.
We were.
Both of you probably.
Me and I.
So, you know that there was, I think, finally a realization that there's a difference between situational poverty and intergenerational poverty, and that they've got to be dealt with in different ways. So, in 2012, a law was enacted that required data to be gathered about intergenerational poverty. And the next year, a follow-up bill created on the state level, a welfare reform commission, which, what's he called? Lieutenant Governor Cox now heads, and advising that commission, there was a committee called the IGP Advisory Committee created, which Bishop David Burton of the LDS Church was asked to chair. Those two bodies did their business for four or five years, gathering information, publishing an annual report, but not much really got going, until, if you'll bring up the next slide. Melissa?
Yes, we're having to coordinate.
Okay. Well, you've got, we're good.
Yeah.
I can see it here, but, okay, now I can see it there. Are you looking at Mr. Cox?
We are.
Okay. So, he came here about, well, it's 2016, in May, and encouraged our county to take up the approach that the state had been following, create a welfare reform commission, create a, an advisory commission or committee to actually do the on-the-ground work. And as it says here, you, we were already ahead at that time of most counties, largely due to Commissioner Ebert's efforts, and we just needed at that point to get organized here and to move forward, which we then did. So, if you'll change to the next slide. Under Commissioner Ebert's direction, the Welfare Reform Commission for our county was created, and now, you know, Commissioner Jenkins, you chair that. I was a member as the chair of the advisory board, and then we included Brian Benyon, Kevin Eastman, the two superintendents of the school districts, and Michelle Hewer, the juvenile court justice, and Debbie Sparks, who was the area or regional representative of the Department of Workforce Services. And so, for the last three years, our advisory committee has worked under the direction of the Welfare Reform Commission. What have we done? Well, we clarified our end objective, which was to create in the children of this county that are under intergenerational poverty, the power to determine their lives, the power of self-determination, to be able to have an opportunity, an equal opportunity and equal access to all of the blessings and services that children who are not in poverty have. I like that term, self-determination. And we rounded out our program, at least schematically, by creating something called the Four Pillars of Self-Determination. The state had suggested that the county focus on four items: education, economic stability, early childhood, and health. We broadened that a little bit, again with Commissioner Ebert's and now Commissioner Jenkins' suggestion, to include these four quadrants: health and well-being, which is mental and physical health, economic stability, access and equity, which is equal opportunity, to education, to health services, to everything that life requires. And then, the principles of resiliency and dignity, we feel, are integral to a child having the power of self-determination. And it's sort of cradled, or cradled in family and community support. So, in, in implementing then the program that we devised, these are the three or four main milestones that we have achieved. Okay. So, in June of 2016, we launched our committee. In June of 2017, we had, by June of 2017, we had created a strategic plan, and the end result of that, the very last line there, was to develop and implement a pilot program, which we eventually succeeded in doing during 2018, which we'll talk about briefly. In January of 2018, we helped sponsor a, really quite an amazing lab at Summit on the question of IGP. And this last year, largely through the efforts of Melissa Freeyang, who's helping me here, we obtained substantial grants to help with after-school resiliency in the Roy School Cone, and also assisting the Boys and Girls Clubs of Weber and Davis County, as well as the Weber School District. And then, in October of 2018, we sort of brought everything together and created what we've called ICAN, Integrated Community Action Now, and received a grant from the state of Utah through the Division of Workforce Services for $150,000, which has been funding this pilot program. What is the pilot program? It's based on the idea, again, I love this quote, "Every kid is one caring adult away from being a success story." In our efforts to identify the problem and identify the resources that existed, we, we found over 150 organizations in Weber County that are devoted to providing services for the poor. It is, one might say, a big industry, and often, it's very siloed in the way that it works. But with all of that, there, there needs to be in the life of every IGP child or adult, some person, some mentor, some coach. We've, we've called the person that we've established an integration coach, resource integration coach. And we have been working now for about six months with two of these coaches, identifying families that are trapped in intergenerational poverty, having a coach go into that family, becoming acquainted, establishing a relationship of trust, conducting a needs assessment, and then, with the family's consent and cooperation, working to bring about an elevation of the life for the parents and for the children. It's interesting that roughly 70% of IGP children are being raised by single parents, most often a single mother. But the, the results of this to date, you can see, 100% of the parents participated in a hands-on parenting skills and development course. Absenteeism in school, which is a real big problem for poverty-level kids, has gone down from 100% chronically absent to about 73. Wellness visits, this includes physical, mental, and dental health, rose from 0% to 69%. Homelessness dropped from 33 to zero, and year-round employment for adults rose by 30%. So, you can see this wraparound approach involves helping the families gain employment or improve it, gain or improve housing, gain or improve the healthcare that they're getting, their parenting skills, and then encouraging the children in their educational efforts. So, at this point, I think you, as a commission, have made a wonderful move in taking what we had created over a three-year period and folding that into something you've now called the Prosperity Center of Excellence. And I commend you for doing that. I think it's the perfect home for what we've been doing, and I think you've hired the near-perfect person to direct that, in Melissa. She's been an integral part of our work the last three years. She's very talented. She knows everyone in this field and has, I think, the kind of compassionate heart that you have to have to persevere in this type of work. So, I'd like to recognize as well today, three of the people that I've labored with over these three years, who've been very helpful. Chris Ibsen, and Major Pat Condon, and Reverend Bill Hirsink. Would you three stand up and take a small bow? There've been many others. Our committee, I think, had a membership of, I don't know, maybe 25 to 30 people. Some came and went as circumstances required. But it's been personally satisfying. It was a very laborious, I would say, process. It took a long time, but I think finally clarity came, and I think the end result that we have going now is going to be, is going to be, to prove to be scalable. I think that's the next big issue. Can you go from 25 families to 100, to the 500, maybe, that we'll have to be at to really help cure this problem in our county? But I think you're going to have the very best chance to do that in the way that you're currently structured. So, I've come, not to be praised, but to be buried. I'd like to formally submit my resignation as the chair of the committee, and thank you for the opportunity to serve and say that I think the committee can be officially dissolved and its efforts incorporated into this center that you've organized. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marlon. That's a wonderful report. So, we've started the prosperity as a result, a Center of Excellence. We've recognized what needs to be done now. I agree with your points. We've notified Ogden City of the things that we're doing, and believe it or not, this week coming, we actually have a work session with Ogden City to talk about some of these issues.
Tremendous.
Well, that's unheard of. We, we generally keep our distance from Ogden City and them from us, you know, and we're actually going to work together on some of these things.
I'm glad to see that happen.
We've, we've got a work structure put together for this Center of Excellence, organizational chart, and we've identified that we need to get a services coordinator on board now to start unifying all these services that are out there and coordinating how that they come down. So, we're trying to carry on from where you've put us and Commissioner Ebert in his efforts here, and we want to thank you very much for what you've done for us. And in fact, while we're on that, we have a, a little plaque we want to give you.
Aye.
This plaque says, "Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to Marlon Jensen, Outstanding Champion of Intergenerational Poverty, awarded to Weber County on the 9th day of July 2019." And we've all signed it. So, this is something for you. Hang on the wall and... We want to thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, let's do it. We want to come down.
I would accept it on behalf of my associates as well to get as much work as I can. We're often far smarter.
Well, we want your associates to come up and be part of this picture, I hope, please.
Through the contrast.
Yeah.
Nobody could do that.
My boss.
You know, you don't...
Well, we appreciate your efforts you put in. You know, this is kind of a thankless job, and it's a tough job, what you guys have done.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Why do you know?
Blessings on you, everybody. Go ahead. Big challenge.
Yeah. Big challenge. You're right. Thanks, guys. You bet. Well, this is exciting. It's exciting to see this pushed forward, and hopefully, we can keep it going and do good things for the people in our community.
You know, if I may?
Yes, please.
You know, in the past, sometimes political bodies in this commission, there were some criticisms, and some rightly so, with some outside contracts that were entered into. But this is one that wasn't the case. This is the one that was so successful, was now, is now dissolved, and now is morphed into something better. They've done their job. They met their, they met their objectives, and now we have, now it's resigned. And so, and boy, we couldn't be a better, couldn't be a better group. This is wonderful to be able to directly affect those who are using the system, and now being able to participate and contribute to the system. It's, it's wonderful, and I commend, I commend this team as one where we're headed in the right direction, most assuredly. in the right direction, most assuredly.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, item four, we're gonna hold for our next week's agenda. And item five is request for a right-of-way contract between Weaver County and the following people. Tom Kirk Faverro, Kevin Hassel, Nancy Faverro, Terry Kelly, Kelly Rose, and Ann Christensen. Gary Meyer, you're here to present this today. Tell us what's up here.
Good morning Commissioners. So, what we have for your approval today is six different right-of-way contracts with the individuals previously mentioned. This is for the corridor preservation project on 3300 South. And we're happy to entertain questions on any of these here, but I have a copy of them in front of me, if you guys have anything specific. I believe you've got a copy as well.
So basically, these are just negotiations that you've entered into on the county's behalf, and looking, seeking our approval?
That is correct. We've had appraisals done on these properties and determined the value that they're to be compensated for, and this is the agreement that we've entered into for each of these individuals.
Great. Questions Commissioners?
Question, Chair. So, did you say this is corridor preservation, so is there imminent construction planned, or are we just, is it just preservation at this point?
At this point, Commissioner Far, we're in the preservation mode on 3300 South. There's an identical project on 2550 that has some construction money coming in the near future that you might be thinking of, but at this point on 3300, it is preservation at this point. As development happens, that will trigger the construction money and the building of that, widening of that actual facility.
And it's, obviously, the time to do this as we grow is now, not later. We know from our past that things, especially real estate, will be more expensive in the future. And so now is the time to acquire these right-of-ways for preservation, because it will benefit the county, both from a transportation standpoint and a monetary standpoint in the future.
Absolutely. Foresight's always a good thing, and it's very, very, very well thought out to do this at this point.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate that. So, any other questions Commissioners? I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Five under Action Item H.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate that. All right, the next item is Commissioner comments. Commissioners, either of you want to say something?
I just, you know, I think we've been reminded on the, that we've had some discussions on this Ogden Valley septic tank slash sewage issue that we've know is out there. I think it's important that we take a hard look at what's happened in the past. I always actually attended that water study meeting, at least the presentation, at least one of them, and there might have been more than one. So I think it's important that we look at that and look for the future as we, in our zoning plan and our general plan, look very carefully at how we're gonna deal with this, because it's coming down the road probably faster than, faster than some of us would like. But I think this is one item that we can't continue to, you know, kick the can down the road.
Well, to Mrs. Fulmer's point, that's exactly it. The demand is up there to grow and build. If we can't solve this water issue, we can't issue permits.
Correct.
And we've got to, we've got to decide what we're gonna do up there.
For those who may be listening now or another time, correct, it was, the commission meeting held was July 10th, 2018. July 10th, 2018. Lucy Fulmer, for the Utah Geological Survey on the Ogden Valley Hydrology Study, we had the hearing here, and we also had another hearing at a work session in the Ogden Valley. It's presented up in the Ogden Valley.
After.
After it was done here.
I remember that, yeah.
I don't remember, I don't remember the other state agency that was supposed to be involved to put that...
Was that our commission meeting, huh?
It was at our commission meeting.
Well, I'm gonna have to go back and watch that, because I was a Commissioner then by one month. So Kevin's right. We'll have to go back and watch that and refresh my memory.
And I got this information basically from Lori Brinkerhoff. She sent it to me. She heard us talking.
Already?
Yeah.
Tell her we miss her.
Good night, Lori.
She already heard that.
You are fast. It's, we haven't, we haven't, we've only been in this meeting about 56 minutes. She got that day already.
Right, well, she just didn't send it, that's why.
Yeah, that's pretty darn good.
I would have got that on my own. Because I've been hunting around, that's a, that is a very, very, it's a very informative study, and everything drains, everything drains down to the pine view, everything.
So, Sean, do we have that study written?
Yes.
Yes, the study is complete, but it's being reviewed by another state agency, and that's where the trouble is, getting it released.
Okay, so we don't actually have a copy of it then?
That's correct. We don't have a copy.
The finalized copy.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So we haven't physically seen it, but we have seen the presentation.
Yes.
All right. Very good, sir. Well, Kevin, we'll jump on that. Thank you for your point. All right, well, with that, Commissioner Harvey, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Cut you off.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. We're adjourned.